Understand the personal accommodations that parents of children, families want because they're exposed at home to maybe immunocompromised people, kids who have asthma, you know, I mean, there's, you know, families who just aren't comfortable, et cetera. And, you know, we're hearing that, as Jonathan pointed out, from the educators. And I'm just wondering, you know, with the staffing models and with the level of comfort and their ability to teach, et cetera, given the circumstances, what are we doing to mitigate the staffing issue? What are we doing to make sure everyone's comfortable? What are we doing, you know, and it's, it's not really different between staff and student either, because some students may feel that they, they learn best in that hybrid, or probably in a full-time classroom, but yet they're nervous about the situation. I understand all the, all the, all the controls put in place, but it's, you know, and we talked about this a little bit earlier, it's about the enforcement of those controls and how quickly we can react if something does go awry. And that's, that's kind of where I'd like to see you address it, just particularly on the record here, because I know we talked about this, questions were asked during the study session, but to try and reiterate that a little bit more here, to get a better idea of how those two play together. And Terry, by the way, I mean, I know that one of the issues we've had, and you keep bringing it up, is until we find out what parents want to do, what families are choosing, and then marrying that up with the staffing models, is one of the variables that we're going to have to deal with fairly quickly, knowing that we're still in a volatile environment, and it can change. So that kind of plays into this.
Oh, I'm not sure what your question was.
I think you're going into an area that is still evolving, Mary. I think you're going into an area that's still evolving because of what you just said. It's very volatile. And I, I, I caution us to not press them for questions like that. I understand, we need to get the information out, people want to know, but some, there's some limitations to it at this point.
I understand that.
I will say this, though, Mary.
So I would like to move this along.
And I just, one thing. So anybody that answered no, that thinks they may need an accommodation, or they may need to leave, we're reaching out to them individually, my staff is, that's the, the level of granularity we're doing, in reaching out to that individual and say, let us help you walk through this process and tell you if an accommodation can be made, or if you're eligible for a leave based upon all the guidance. So we're reaching out to everybody individually. No one's going to be left out of that, but the guidance itself will be based on all the guidance that we see out there now in statute, or by whatever's available to them. So, but we'll have a lot more, we'll have a lot more answers for you in about a week.
Okay. Any other comments?
Specifically, ask Enrique.
I've asked Enrique, he's not responding. Do you have any other comments, Enrique?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I have a question more with respect to instructional design. Teaching in the classroom and teaching at a distance, it's two different animals, two different models, requires two different sets of skills, and you would approach that instructional design in a completely different way. I know for myself, it's at least one month to put together a class for an online learning environment, regardless of whether it's synchronous or asynchronous. So I know that there were some comments before about the built team being involved, or having some meetings with them. I'm looking for a little bit more color around that level of engagement and involvement, as we look to select one of these different options. And I guess to frame it up properly, we want to enable and equip all learners to reach their full potential. And I want to know how we're going to do that in this hybrid environment, where we have a mix of in-class, a mix of at-home learning, with just weeks to go before the actual start of the school year.
You're exactly right. Weeks to go and a lot of details to flush out. I know through the summer, I know Dr. Schutinger has been working with elementary teachers, middle school teams and high school teams to flush out those questions. Those will, that will be a work in progress. From the standpoint of educational tools, resources, students having access, it is different. It, it's not, having students in person, and hybrid home, and a distance learning academy, those are different things. And, and so it, it is going to rely a lot, we're going to need time to continue to work through that. We learned a lot last spring. We learned some, some things that we certainly wouldn't do again, and we learned some things of how can we continue to improve. And so, given what we're looking at, that is a task that we're, that we started, we have been working on, and we're going to continue to work on, to support teachers, as well as provide an environment where kids can excel, kids can find connections, meaningful connections with their peers, as well as the staff, and build on those relationships.
The only thing that I'd like to add to that is, you know, we understand, and it was one of the themes from that very first focus group, that very first set of data points that, that Chrisland got from that focus group, was the importance of professional learning and adult learning. So how do we support our families through this as well? But I know that, and I don't have the details, but I know Jeff and his team, you know, have tried to figure out, how do we provide additional, in addition to the start of the school year, how do we provide additional professional development for our staff? And then that was also one of the things, as we looked at those instructional flex days and that early release, that certainly one of our goals was to ensure that we had collaboration time for grade-level teachers, or department teachers, and then also an opportunity to see what additional professional development needs are going to be coming, that we can, you know, turn around pretty quickly to provide those opportunities for staff.
Any other comments? I just have a couple of things I'd like to say. I believe that masks are required in public places. I think after, especially after looking at all the emails, teachers would appreciate that every student is wearing a mask. I think that needs to be enforced. And that the, the plan that's being presented to us is very much based on the data that we've been given, the guidance that we've been given from the state. And it's, it'll be helpful for kids to be in school for a while. I feel strongly about that. If for no other reason, for their mental health. I know how I felt the first time I could actually sit down and visit with some friends, even though we were 10 feet apart. It's, it's nice to be able to communicate face-to-face with people, and I think our kids deserve to have that in the school, if we can make it safe for them, and keep the teachers safe as well. And before I read this resolution, I just really want to thank everyone in the district for all the work they've done. I've been in and out of this district building a number of times this summer, more times than I want to be in the summer, actually. And there's constantly people working on, on what we can do, what, you know, what maybe can happen, what maybe can't happen. Unfortunately, most of us want to be black and white, and this isn't black and white, it's gray. And it's going to change, and it's going to be volatile, as Mary said. It's going to be changing all the time, and we may be in a whole different place in two weeks when we come back to meet. So we just want to keep that in mind, and I'm asking our parents and our community members to hopefully understand that, and be prepared for changes with not very much notice, if possible. So. I would like to read the resolution that's been presented before us. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent District 719 as follows. Section 1, the superintendent is hereby directed to implement the following base learning model to open the 2020-21 school year hybrid learning model. Section 2, the superintendent is hereby authorized, after consultation with the school board chair and notification to the school board, to select and implement a different learning model for the school district, or any specific school buildings, without school board action, if the superintendent reasonably believes that prompt implementation of a different learning model is necessary, and that constraints of time and public health considerations render it impractical to hold a school board meeting to approve the implementation. The learning model selected and implemented by the superintendent shall continue in effect unless and until the school board, in consultation with the superintendent and appropriate school district staff and public health officials, deems it in the best interest of the school district and its students to implement a different learning model. Section 3, the superintendent will provide regular updates to the school board regarding the district's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the MDE and the MDH respectively. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So may.
By Stacy. Second?
Second.
And Michael. Any last comments or questions? Terry?
I just, I just want to remind the board that as part of this resolution, it's those calendar changes as well. So we went, we went to prove a different calendar. It's those two professional development days that moved from Mondays to Wednesdays, and then the early release schedule on those flex days. Also, just letting you be aware of extending that childcare to all staff in our district, not just those instructional staff. So I just wanted to be sure that you remembered that that was part of the resolution as well. Thank you.
Any other comments? Michael?
I just want to make a few comments just about the process. First of all, I want to thank our administrative team and our staff for involving us from the beginning. We've had a lot of emails, a lot of encouragement from both the chair and the staff to come in and visit. I have come in several times and have made calls, and I will say that that is a reflection of my anxiety and concern in, in this entire pandemic situation. I also want parents and teachers to know that we have read every email that has come through. I have gotten calls from parents and teachers, and I have made calls to parents and teachers. You are all being heard and seen, and that is part of why this is such a hard thing to get our heads around. We've had some really tough decisions in the past where we've all lost sleep and poured over data, but I think this is the hardest one that we've had to think about. What it comes down to for me is to admit that I had all these human wavering moments where I thought, well, you know, if we just could second-guess the data, it looks like it's going up, so let's call it early, and let's just focus on this. And that puts my filter and my concerns, and my wanting to put everybody in a bubble and keep them safe, that puts that forefront. But what I do, if I try to sway our staff to make decisions that way, is I take away the framework the governor has given you. He has, could have come and said, the entire state is in hybrid, or all in distance. Instead, he said, here are the guidelines to use in your district. So what I just want to clarify is that I don't feel like the administration is coming advocating or fighting for a choice. I feel like they were given data and said, based on the data, this is our recommendation. And I feel, with as much wavering as I have done about how to start the school year, I trust the process. I trust that people smarter than me in the field of education and health can provide these, this data. And I don't think we can take that away from you. I don't think we can expect you to leave with confidence, or integrity, or be intentional if we try to convince you to go a route other than the data shows us. I also trust you as a human being, to be sensitive to the concerns of your teachers and your staff, and I have seen that. I also want our public to know that we have had staff working on-site all summer. These are not administrators, or kids' co-staff, or, or child nutrition staff, or custodians who've been sitting behind a desk at home on Zoom meetings, but they have been here and working, and that's helped us test through those protocols for what we do if somebody gets sick. And that brought me a calming sense, too, to know that we're not coming in cold to this procedure. So I, I know this may change. I may, you may come to us in two weeks and say the numbers are here. I'm using the plan the governor gave us. And I have to change my recommendation for this base model. And then going forward, I trust you to make those decisions, and I trust our staff. And I just want to express my gratitude to everybody. We have an incredible team at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, from our leaders, to our custodians, to our teachers who wrote letters about how much they love teaching, and how much they love their students, and care, and fear for them even. And our child nutrition staff who fed hungry kids all summer long, and are going to continue to do that, right? Everybody in our district has poured their heart into it. They're here for the right reason, and I trust them going forward to do what's best for our kids. We have to do health and safety first, and educational rigor second, but I trust that both are going to be addressed. So I just wanted to say that before we vote.
Any other final comments?
Michael did a great job there, and I'm not going to try and do better than that. And I think you can hear the emotion in her voice, which I will tell you, I think, from, you know, my years of sitting here, this is one, if not the one, hardest decisions, or one I guess I never thought I would have to make, is about sending our, operating our district under a global health pandemic. But I do want to just thank Dr. Stallow and her staff, and all, and everyone involved. I think they've put in numerous, numerous thousands of hours here over the summer, in, in making this plan, and continuing to evolve and change, and as the guidance moved, and as things happen. And we're going to need that as, as we go forward with this year, because we don't know what's going to happen. And I think, you know, as, that is kind of the new way of life, as it is here. One thing I do want to say to my fellow board members is, I really appreciate everyone's comments. I think, over the last couple of meetings, I don't know how everyone's going to vote on this, but I will say this, that I do respect everyone's opinion, and I do believe that everyone will be voting with what they think is the best for our kids, and wholeheartedly, because I think this weighs on all of us. So I, I thank them for their conversation and respect, or through this process. So I am supportive of the hybrid model, and I think we have to follow the data. I think that's where, where we're at right now with, with how things have been guiding over the last, you know, five to six months here. So I will be supporting this resolution going forward.
One of the emails we got in the past week or so, from a community member, had 95 separate questions. Every one of them a reasonable and fair question about a specific thing to ask about. And as I, as I was reading it, it occurred to me just the enormity of the task that all of you had, because you had to answer all those things. I mean, it's, and, and, and more, and many, many more. And so I will reiterate the addition, the thank yous and the appreciation for the work of the team and everything you have done. Over the course of the past few years, the community has put each of the seven of us in these roles. The community never thought we were going to be having to decide what to do in a pandemic. We certainly never thought we were going to have to be making these decisions. But I do, I respect the fact that people have trusted us, and trusted us to make good decisions on behalf of the school district. And so I, that, I think we all feel that. And I think it's worth noting. I will be supporting the resolution. Just a couple of moments to walk through my rationale for it, and I do have a request of the community that I'm going to make at the end. Science and data. I mean, it's science and data, it is science and data. I trust it. I trust Dr. Fauci, I trust Dr. Microulsterholm. I believe people who have spent a lifetime studying this stuff, and made it their life's work, know more about it than I do, and I think it makes sense to listen to them. So for me, it, there's no hesitation that the governor's guidance, MDE's guidance, MDH's guidance are based on science, and that is what we should follow. I have confidence in the Scott County public health officials to, to consolidate the data and get it to you accurately, so you can make decisions. I have confidence in district officials to execute the plan that we will hopefully approve. Without a doubt, the hardest part of this decision, as my colleagues have said, is thinking about the teachers that are going to be in the buildings, and the concerns that they have. There were multiple emails that I'm sure every one of us, if, when we got to the end, we needed a tissue, because it grabs your heart. And it, and it is felt. I had a conversation with one of our teachers today, who said, again, talked about, we don't get the choice, right? Families do get the choice, as we were saying. Families get to decide to distance learn, harder for our teachers. And one of them said, I thought about, how did the Target workers feel? And how do all the healthcare workers feel? And she said, I, I, I think I can relate to what all of those folks have been through over the course of the last six months. My daughter cleaned carts at Target all summer. My wife shoves swabs in people's noses on a regular basis to test them. It's, it's close to, in my family, to understanding how big of a concern it is. So it's, we all, we, we all have, I think, a great deal of empathy for our staff, and appreciation for our teachers, and that they are going to be, none of them signed up when they decided to become teachers, to literally, and figuratively, have their lives somewhat on the line when they go to work. I really hope at some point, our community can decide to do something like New York did for the healthcare workers, and roll out the red carpet, and celebrate these folks and appreciate them. The last thing that I would like to say is, I have a heartfelt plea to our families and to our community. You've asked a lot of us, I'm going to ask something of all of you. We all want to return to some semblance of normal. We all want to send kids back to school every day. We want our athletes to be able to play. We want our band to be able to march, and we want our theater kids to be able to perform. Kids belong in school. How many times have people told us that? And I completely agree. I just add one word, safely. Kids belong in safe schools. And there's only one way that we're going to be able to make this happen as a community, and that is if, as a community, wait, take it seriously. The school can do everything right from the moment your kid steps on the bus, to the moment they step off the bus in the afternoon. And if you're not wearing your mask, and if they're not doing the right things in between, it isn't going to make any difference. So if we want our kids back to school full-time, as fast as possible, and if we want to make sure that we don't get to 50 cases in Scott County, because if we have to go to all distance, guess what? There's no sports. You're shutting it all down. It's done. So if we want all of those things to happen, guess what? Listen to Dr. Fauci. Wear your mask, wash your hands, social distance, avoid large groups. And if we all do our part, we can safely get our kids back to school. Bye.
Hard to follow, Jonathan. Are there any other comments?
I'll take.
Mary?
Yes, first of all, I do want to reiterate what everyone said, and I want to thank everyone who put a lot of hard work and thought into this process. We do have a very diverse district, we have very diverse needs. Everyone can and must advocate for themselves, and make the best decisions possible for themselves and their students. And we want people to do that. We want them to have the choice. I think it's very important that they have that choice, and they feel safe, or they feel that they can participate as needed. Again, nobody's going to be able to participate for long if we don't advocate, enforce, and follow the rules, no matter what happens. Also, we have a lot of different scenarios that will fit some individuals, some of them won't. I know that the educators in this district are going to do whatever they can, with the resources that are provided, in order to provide the accommodations for those who need it in any situation. We may not be perfect at it, but we're certainly going to try. Furthermore, the education system, it's not just math and science, it is educating the whole child. It's a holistic system, and that holistic education includes social engagement, and the ability to do that. So the sooner we can get back to that fully, the better. Because, by the way, if you take that part of the, the, of their education away, no one benefits. We're seeing, we are hearing and seeing mental health issues as a result of the isolation, and we need to do something about that. This is also confounded by, in our district, we have quite a duality. We have differing opinions, we have politics, we have a lot of family-based economic uncertainty. And the numbers or data, they, they vary every day, and that's part of the uncertainty that leads to the instability. However, I think people need to understand as a whole, we are a public institution. We are paid for by the taxes of this district, and of the state as a whole. So our decision on how to go forward is truly our own. I don't think it was any surprise, for those people who are involved at the Capitol, that the governor came out and said, local control. I think that was very predictable. I don't think it was any surprise, he was waiting to get just some sort of, you know, standard grid of how to follow, and how to provide those recommendations. Unlike other states, Minnesota's never one to mandate one thing. I know we have a mask mandate, but to mandate whether kids stay home or go to school is not something that anyone predicted. And I truly believe that was pretty much in the, in the cards as early as May and June. But no matter what the board does tonight, even if it takes the input under advisement and continues to discuss, it's not going to be sufficient. Nobody's going to be satisfied. No matter what decision we come with, there's going to be people who like it, people who don't. Every single school district in the state and around the country are in a similar situation. We can learn from each other. But we still need to keep everyone safe. That's the only common denominator. And we've also seen examples in the news of where they have just let the floodgates open, and then dealt with the consequences. Those are consequences that will only push us backward, it won't push us forward. You know, I'm not an educator. I do teach, like, like, like other people here on the board. I am a second, a post-secondary teacher, once in a while, but I don't prepare lesson plans for anyone K through 12 on a regular basis, let alone in these various models, nor do I ever want to. I leave it up to the actual educators to do this. The teachers are frontline staff. They know how to educate, they know how to meet the needs of each student, given the tools at their disposal. And by the way, those tools are never enough, or never ideal. Each educator on their own must make a commitment to go forward in their positions, and they feel comfortable, just like we're asking our families to do. I can't imagine what it would be like to have to teach under these environments. I can't imagine what they must be going through. It's unprecedented for everybody, and that's what we're in. We're not going to get perfection. But if we do it right, and we do it consistently, hopefully we'll get out of this sooner than later. I do want to make a statement, because we did, we had a lot of lessons learned in the last half of last year. I believe that we have developed a lot of new skills, and we've gotten to know our students a lot better. And I'm hoping that this will help everybody as we go forward on this journey. I do know one thing. I'd like to see some stability at first, and I'm still on the fence with, I'd like to see us just go forward with one plan that isn't going to be volatile, that's going to provide some sort of protections, and some sort of consistency for the parents, for the educators, et cetera, so we don't end up in a situation where the numbers go up, and then the numbers go down, and we're constantly going through this, you know, roller coaster. I'm also not comfortable at, you know, abdicating the board's authority to get involved in the detailed situation with the school district. I was not, you know, thrilled that we received this plan and presentation late last week. I am very happy that the board has gone above and beyond, as well as the superintendent and the staff, to answer all of our questions in a very short amount of time. I wish we had been involved in the process a lot longer and sooner, because we are the intermediary between the community and the school district. And I think we need to play that role deeper and more involved now than we ever have before. We've never been in a hybrid situation, we've never even tried it. There's going to be some failures. There's going to be areas that are not going to work well. Just like we weren't involved in the distance learning, not everything worked perfectly, but we certainly learned from it. So, but we need a plan, we need some way to go forward, we need to get this over with, so people can finish planning. And so I, I'm going to go ahead and support the resolution, but I want to make it clear that I do believe that I'd like to see more involvement from the board in the day-to-day decisions on this, not in an emergency situation, and not to hold up decisions, but to be aware and informed, and be able to provide feedback in a timely manner, because I think that's important. You know, and I'm going to close with, in June, everyone wanted their kids back to school. In July, everyone wanted their kids back to school. The commitment letters went out, and people went, oh, my gosh, I've got to make a commitment. I want my kid in school, but I'm not sure I want him to come home from school. That sounds strange, because they're worried about infecting their family, they're worried- They're worried about what can happen. And now we're seeing a lot of uncertainty. And that's okay. Hopefully, the options that have been provided today and by the school district are going to allow some of that uncertainty to be squashed a little bit. But please bear with us. And whatever you do in the community and everyone else, speak up. We can't advocate on your behalf either if we don't know what's going on. So I for one appreciate all the letters, pro and con, for and against, you know, accusatory, not accusatory, upset, you know, not upset. That's what we're for. That's what you should be doing and I hope it continues. So I want to thank everyone for speaking up.
Any other comments? Enrique? I can't tell if he's, he needs to wave.
Yes, I'm awake.
No, no, I was asking. You need to wave sometimes because I'm not sure that, if you want to speak or not.
Maybe a brief comment. So, members of the community, if you're watching this at home or from other location other than at DSC, you'll notice that I'm not there. The reason for that is I'm one of those immunocompromised people that shouldn't be in public places of accommodation. Not because of significant risk of, because of significant risk of morbidity, mortality. That's my burden to bear. It's also my kids' burden to bear. It's my wife's burden to bear as they go out through their day-to-day, whether it's to work, out to the market, out to other places. It's that overarching theme that has become our life. My situation, our situation, isn't necessarily unique. It's, there are many others out there in our community that maybe the silent sufferers that don't say anything because we're all home. We're doing the needful things to keep ourselves safe. And the prospect of sending kids back to the classroom is frightening, terrifying for some on many different levels. I have full faith that things will go the way they need to. The data suggests that we are at a spot where this hybrid environment is probably the most appropriate. I'd like to go even beyond the data to say, we need to make sure we can get the easy things right. We need to have a good, solid plan. Beyond the data, we need to make sure that our teachers are ready, that they have all the equipment, all the tools, all the training, all the support they need to be able to move back into whatever learning environment is ahead of themselves. Because they need to, they need to win just as much as we do, just as much as our learners do. They need to feel that they are succeeding and able to move forward without necessarily beating their heads up against the wall or just feeling defeated on a day-to-day basis. And my mind, shifting that dial just a little bit, it's the distance model. It's not the most attractive of the options, but it allows people to move back in and to kind of dip their toe into education. And then we can dial things up from there as we continue to grow since the distance option is still going to be part of the hybrid. So why not get the first step right and focus on getting that nailed down extremely well before moving forward with a partial classroom option and what that looks like. So, science, yes. Data, yes. There's also that component of making sure people feel empowered, that they have everything they need so that they can move forward and be successful, regardless of where they are. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just want to add one more thing. Jonathan made a comment about the person that sent in the, and we did, we got a couple of them. One was excessive on the number of questions. And I look at that a little bit different because I think we need to move on this. And I do agree with Enrique saying, "I would prefer to start safe." But I think the questions that were asked were indicative of the uncertainty and the lack of information we've been able to give to the community. And I don't feel that all those questions were answered, but I'm hoping that with another month of planning, they will be. But I took that, those questions to be totally different, as well as the questions of everybody else to say, "You're not giving us enough information to make our decisions right now." And so the sooner we can get that information out there, the better we're all going to be.
Okay. I think, I appreciate all the comments of my colleagues on the board. Everyone's coming from a different place. I respect whatever decision you all feel you need to make tonight. And I would emphasize that this is probably the hardest one to make. In many, many years of being on the board, it's a tough one. I'm trying to keep it less emotional and look at the data. I agree that it needs to be, you know, comfortable for people, but we have to base it on something. And the guidance that we've been given by the state allows us to look at our data and make it work for us. We're not being told we have to do something specific, but we are giving direction on what our parameters are. If we go outside those parameters, my understanding is the consultant comes in and then they're going to guide us and I don't believe we really want that. So, again, I appreciate everyone's opinions. I appreciate all the work of the district. I feel for the parents and the teachers. It's a tough decision and like you said, we've had a lot of questions asked of us. Some of the questions that have been asked, we're not ready to answer yet. We can't. We need to start somewhere. I hate to use the chicken and the egg, but it kind of feels that way, that we've got to do something, make some kind of a decision in order to be able to answer the questions coming up so we have a direction to go in. We can't answer everything. We don't know everything. So, I guess with that and with no more comments, I'll take a vote. And I'll start with Enrique.
Nay.
Melissa?
Nay.
Mary?
Nay.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Jonathan? As I said, I respect all of your opinions, but we'll be going forward with the hybrid model. Thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item is the summer program report, including targeted services and special education. Is that Chrislyn? Or two?
Chrislyn and Melissa.
And Melissa, okay.
Good evening, everyone. And actually, I'll only be presenting on our summer targeted services programming, which is inclusive of our K-8. Oh, thank you. So just really briefly, I just want to share what exactly targeted services is and then what our program objectives were for our elementary program this summer, share some feedback that we received from parents and students who participated in our elementary program, which finished on July 31st. But we are actually currently in the midst of our middle school program, so I'll share those objectives and what that kind of structure looks like too. Targeted Services is designed to address the needs of students that may not be met in the regular school. Targeted Services programming is for before-school, after-school, or summer. Those dollars are set aside by separate legislation that we can access. Student enrollment generates the revenue to sustain that programming. And programming, like I said, must occur outside of the school day for targeted services. Students must meet criteria to be included in that programming and participation is optional. Our goal with targeted services programming is to provide highly engaging learning experiences where students have an opportunity to build community and apply their learning in new ways. And it's really intended to address both the academic and the social, emotional needs of students. And it gives us an opportunity to work with some smaller class sizes. This summer, for elementary summer targeted services, we had 138 students participate. That program was all distance learning-based and we had eight licensed teachers working with those 138 students. There's a picture there, just an example. Students, most of our work this summer was focused on science because it was very hands-on and highly engaging. And that's just some of our students were working with some vocabulary words around the water cycle. And then our middle school program, we have 30 students participating and we have one licensed teacher doing a hybrid model. Our goal with the elementary program this summer was to really focus on opportunities to be creative, drive, have the students drive the learning based on their interests. And then also try to embed some of those essential skills for academic success. So, you know, determining a task and bringing it to completion, some of those skills that support learning. And then it also gave us an opportunity to personalize academics and continue to build those foundational skills utilizing our iXL. So we started, you know, we were using that during distance learning and we were fortunate enough to have access to that throughout the summer, actually for all of our students. And that provides us with some diagnostic information where we can really target and personalize the work that students do in that program to their specific needs. So our teachers were assigning tasks to students based on their individual needs. Our elementary program was designed as a distance learning workshop. So due to the requirements based on the funding source that we were using, it did have to be completely synchronous. So we structured a workshop for students to participate in that was two hours long. They met as a whole class to build some community at the beginning portion of the workshop. Then the teachers had structured small groups because we were also doing a multi-age program. So those small groups gave some opportunity for differentiation based on those specific grade levels too. And we also mixed it up in other ways. And then while some students were doing small group, other students were preparing for their small group, working on their independent lessons, doing some of that work. And then the teachers kind of closed that workshop by bringing the whole group back together. We did provide, we did a pickup. So students had access to all of the hands-on learning materials that they would need for all of the lessons that we had planned for during that time. We did two sessions for elementary and so students could opt-in to either one or both, just to give families some flexibility in that too. And those were based on topics. So our first session was all about water and our second session was all about plants and animals. So, the feedback that we got overall from kids was great. We had kids on the last day not wanting to hang up their Google Meet with their teachers, which is great. That's the best kind of feedback I think we can get. We had parents, very complimentary of our teaching staff. The teaching staff, the feedback from them was, "Distance learning is really, feels really different when you're doing it because that's your plan." Right? Like when you know that you're, that's the plan, it feels different, right? So, we had, they had great feedback and they were like, "This gives me a better, I feel better about doing this if this is what we have to do in the fall." Like that was the feedback we got from staff. Our middle school program objective is very similar to our elementary program, but because we're integrating it in a hybrid and we're doing it this time of year, our goal is really to make sure that we're embedding those skills that students will need, regardless of what learning model that they come to in the fall. So, especially for our sixth graders, our incoming sixth graders who are participating, like making sure, using that as an opportunity to help them build familiarity with Schoology, which is a new learning platform for them. So again, those academic skills that they'll need. And similarly, personalizing those academic, that academic development using iXL again. This is an example of some student work. They were doing some community building about their identity, like with their fingerprint. So their class is designed as a three-hour period. And so we have three groups rotating through the program. So each group will have four days in-person with the teacher and their other days will be in a hybrid. And during their hybrid days, they have an opportunity to be synchronous with the rest of the class in-person for that community building component. So, and the feedback, I've checked in with the teacher a couple of times. The kids are enjoying the opportunity to be in school. They know it's different, but, you know, I think we're preparing them for fall.
This was an update. Does anyone have any questions?
Got one quick.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Stacey.
I'm sorry.
Participation-wise? I'm sorry if I missed at the beginning. Were we up-down or like, did a lot of people say no, yes?
You know, we're comparing it against previous models. So I was, I was very pleasantly surprised with the participation that we had, to be honest. I was concerned that we wouldn't get to a place where we could support the program. Typically, when we have an in-person summer academy program, we see attendance of about, we see participation around 300. So percentage-wise, I thought we did really well.
We had a total and we were at 170, yeah?
Yeah.
Better than I thought, yeah. Okay. I was just curious about how the participation.
Yeah.
Mary, did you have a question?
Yeah, you know, I've seen this before. First of all, I love the program. But, you know, I keep on seeing kind of a funnel. We have a lot of kids, 138 in elementary, and then it goes down to 30 in middle school. Is that because of capacity of the program? Or do kids actually not need it when they move from elementary to middle school? How does that work? I've seen, because I've seen the progression before with, even before we had the distance learning and the number of kids that are in those one-off groups. And I'm just kind of curious about how that, how that works.
Just in general, why we see the number kind of go down? I think, two, you know, we're talking about convincing a 12, 13, or 14-year-old that they need to come and do a program at school in the summertime. I think, you know, part of it is just developmental is a big, is a big reason we see some of that. It's not that we don't offer that opportunity, but again, participation is optional. And, you know, it's just opting into those programs.
And the targeted learning that's going to happen during the school year, are the, are these kids going to have a similar group during this school year in particular?
So that'll be something that we continue to develop. So where do we put that programming? Because again, it can't happen during the student day. So it has to be a before-school, after-school, or after-school program. But I definitely see opportunities for us to, in any of the models, be able to provide some sort of programming for students to continue building those academic skills, building community, absolutely.
Is there any type of cohort? If you've got 138 kids in elementary school and then they're moving into middle school, does anyone reach out to them or do you wait for this to be all volunteer?
As far as like recruiting for referral?
Following them.
Oh.
So you knew that they, they came in in the elementary level. Now so many of them are now in middle school. Do we reach out to them? Do we, how do we engage? Or do we just leave it volunteer and say, "Okay, you know this program exists. You can sign up"?
Well, because we do have a criteria for students to participate, we actually have a pretty significant referral process that we go through to recruit and suggest programming to students and families. So that's a, that's a process that we go through every spring.
All right.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is approval of the budget calendar. Julie?
Good evening. In your packet, you've received the budget calendar. We bring the budget calendar for the whole year at this time every year and it just kind of goes over what will happen each month at every board meeting and every work session to keep the board updated on our budget process, enrollment, audit, levy, which is, our auditor, as you know, is going on right now. And so those things, as they happen and occur throughout the year so that we get to the end of next year and we're prepared for the '21, '22 budget. So, if you have any questions about the budget cycle, just let me know.
There any questions?
I do have one question. We at one time had talked about maybe moving up the parameters for the budget going forward. And what I read is that it wouldn't be until January or February. Is that correct? Is that correct? No? I mean, I thought we had talked about possibly moving that into like a November, December, at least the parameters.
For the current year or for the following?
Going into next year's adjustments to the budget that we might need to make.
In the process that we are, is we, we always, we try to make sure that we know as many students as we can for enrolling. And so a lot of our registration happens in February for the high school and for MNCAPs and those students that are attending those programs and, and the middle school as well. And then we also know how many students are coming from some of our other schools in the district, our parochial schools or Aspen Academy. So that helps us with determining our enrollment numbers. And so we kind of wait until then and that helps us to determine what that revenue will be for the next year. Because as you know, enrollment really drives that. But that's one of the reasons that we, the process is what it is, so that we have a little bit better idea of what, what that number is.
Okay, I guess I'm referring to if we have to make any budget adjustments. We talked about parameters and having more time to discuss that.
So we, one of the things that we had talked about was that especially now with enrollment is waiting to see what our October one numbers are so that we know what we are planning on for the next year. I mean, we'll have a better idea because if our numbers are down, then we know we have to do a little more work for the following year.
Right, okay. Any other questions? Okay, I believe I need a motion. Jonathan, second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Mary, did you say it? Okay. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. I guess you're still up with the levy meeting date.
So this is very routine as well. Our levy certification is always on the same day as our December board meeting, which I believe is December fourteenth this year. And so we're asking that the truth and taxation hearing and would be at that date of the regular board meeting in December.
And that would be at the start of our meeting, as it says in our packet. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the levy meeting date?
So made.
By Melissa, second.
Second.
By Michael. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Enrique?
Aye.
That motion carries seven-zero. Thanks Julie.
Thank you.
I guess this is myself and Terry. The next item agenda, item on our agenda is the adoption of the resolution calling for a general election. This is required by the board that we have a resolution. We will have three positions open in the, in the fall going into next year. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution calling for a general election?
So made.
By Melissa, second by Enrique. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Pardon?
Oh, is it a roll call? Yes, I'm sorry. Thanks for reminding me. It is a roll call. Enrique?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
That motion carries seven-zero. Thanks Stacy. Okay, we're moving on to policy. This is a final reading on, well, the first two policies. The one is student wellness. This has come before us. This will be our fourth reading of the student wellness policy. Nothing has changed on it and during that time, there's been no comments made during that period of time. And I will take a motion to approve policy five-fourteen, student wellness.
So made.
Stacy, second. Can't tell over here who's saying it. Mary, any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 That motion carries seven-zero. Our next policy for final reading is policy five-thirty-one, memorials for deceased students or staff. This involves memorials, donations that are made on behalf of students. This is also the fourth time this has come before us. We had it come up, I think, I believe, starting in early June, late May. Graduation time is usually a typical time when people are speaking about memorials. So this is also the final reading, so I'll take a motion to approve policy five-thirty-one.
So made. So made, yeah.
Second by Jonathan. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. Onto our mask policy. This is going off of our protocol, but per MSBA, they would like us to look at this policy and approve it this evening. And I need to get to it, I guess, here. I'm assuming you all had a chance to read it. I know it came kind of late, I think yesterday maybe, and again this afternoon. So does anyone have any questions, concerns, things they want to highlight on the policy?
Yes, I do. So if you go down to definition of face covering, three, A, it goes through different types of face coverings. The first one, paper, isn't going to protect anything.
Well, I think that's what these are.
I know they are, and they're not going to protect anything. Giving you example, the one that I have should be on there. It has been ASTMF sixteen-seventy-one passed. It's got an antibacterial coating on it.
But that's B. Well, I don't believe my mask is to protect me as much as it is to protect other people from spitting on them.
It's saying that people in the building have to wear it, okay?
Right. But I think that that's the purpose of my mask. I'm just saying, that's what I was told.
Okay, well, it's going through different.
A nursing profession, that's what it was too.
Okay. It, there should be face shields on there. There's a face, if I can finish, there's a face shield that attaches to the head that some people can't wear because it gives them a headache and it prohibits or it changes their view. You'll notice that Julian, hers for instance, has a, has a blemish on the side and it's, some staff are not going to be able to wear that, okay? Or they can't have anything on their head. There's a lot of healthcare workers that can't. But they can use ones like this and this has antibacterial coating in it. It is far superior than the paper ones, is my point. So it should be added.
Except in his policy, the policy says that it needs to cover both your, your eyes, nose, and mouth, and that does not. I'm just going off the policy here.
This is a guidance from MSB.
Right.
Again, local control, we can have whatever we want in the policy, as you recall.
Okay.
I'd suggest you make a motion to amend the policy.
Right, so we're having our discussion on, fortunately, this is discussion and, and policy at the same time here. But it should, the policy is what I'm saying, it should include a face shield such as this for, for people that have, they can't breathe. You're breathing in your own CO with a paper mask and there are many people that can't do that. So it should be allowed on this policy.
So I have a question. Are, are you asking to change B, the definition of the face shield, or are you asking to take off some of the things from A?
No, A can be on there. That's fine. People believe in that. It, it, it's ineffective, but that's fine for these purposes.
Which A are you talking about? The definitions?
Right, the definitions. But if you're, if you're going to exclude this kind of mask that actually has antibacterial in it, this should be added to the list of acceptable face shields for, for staff or for, or for students, for anyone.
Okay, that's, that's your opinion on it? Did you have more to talk about with the policy?
Uh, let's see. It's correct, no one under two should wear one.
No one.
No one under two. It's contraindicated.
Right. Maybe as Melissa's looking, is there anyone else who has a comment right now, just in the interest of time? Michael?
We had an email this morning come from MSBA at eleven fifty-five AM with clarification that compliance with executive order twenty-eighty-one, which you can click over and read the details of, is required. We can still pass our mask policy to reinforce that, but there's no way around it. We have to follow the way the governor outlined it.
That came today.
Michael? I might need you to speak a little bit louder. I'm not sure that I'm hearing you very well or the mic isn't picking you up.
Okay, I'm sorry. We got an email this morning from the Minnesota School Board Association at eleven fifty-five AM that said they clarified that compliance with executive order twenty-eighty-one is required. Even if you choose not to pass it as an official policy, it is required. And there's a hot link in there to read what the outline of twenty-eighty-one executive order is. So I don't think we have a choice to modify it. We have to do it as, and not, I haven't compared it side-by-side with our policy outlined by MSBA, but we are required to, whether or not we even pass the policy, we will have to follow those rules.
So it's, you're referring to the general statement of policy A?
Me?
He, yeah, the, the.
You're talking about the executive order, the policy of the school district to comply with executive order twenty-eighty-one?
Yeah. And they just clarified this morning that even if we changed anything or didn't approve a mask policy, we still have to be in accordance with that. They verified that for us this morning. So we can't change those rules.
We can add whatever we like to our local policy. We can, we can have any kind of face covering we want on there.
MDE clarified the compliance is required. And so if we review their executive order, perhaps that allows us that flexibility. I haven't reviewed it, but we are required.
So let me.
We can do whatever we want.
Well, let me just.
It's our district.
Let me just clarify, we have in D, the reference to the executive order. The only thing that's above that is the description so that people know what they're doing, right? And you're just asking for the addition of the type of face shield that you're wearing to that list.
Right, because if you look under implementation, D, it says individuals who cannot tolerate a face covering due to a medical condition. If they cannot breathe their own CO in, they still want to appease everyone and wear a face covering, this is covering the nose and it's covering the mouth. It's far more effective than the people that are coughing in the room right now.
It, it does say that you still have to, if you're going to wear a shield unless under certain teaching circumstances, you still need to have a mask because that does not prevent your air from coming to me.
Right, what I'm asking is that the board consider the parameters of a face shield such as this that is used widely throughout America and throughout the world. And there should be no reason why a person shouldn't be able to have something like this if they cannot breathe. We saw people here about ready to pass out because they were presenting and they couldn't breathe. It happened to Julie.
This, we have, we're talking about following data the whole way through and we're talking about making our teachers and families feel safe. And the data says.
Right, and I want to make sure that our staff have the ability to wear something that is got antibacterial protection, that they're going to be able to breathe in, and there's nothing wrong with this.
There is explanation in there, I believe, that covers if staff are doing a certain type of teaching.
Can, can I make a motion just to add her type of mask to this? And, and, and I'm okay with that?
As the policy reads, we can't go without a mask unless they're doing a special teaching situation.
This is a mask.
It is, it's a face shield.
You can't just wear that throughout the day, but if you're teaching someone how to read, for example, and you have to do.
You can wear this throughout the day.
I'm sorry, the policy states that it's for certain teaching situations or medical conditions approved at the discretion of the administration. And so if I'm teaching language therapy, for example, or speech therapy, there may be a time I take my mask off, I put my shield on, and the student may do the same so we can watch how our mouth moves, et cetera.
It's important, I agree.
Exactly, but it is not a replacement for a mask throughout the entire day.
Can I, can I just add a comment? Okay, so I, I work with people at three M that make these and make those.
Sure.
And she's got a point that is even allowed because in, in hospitals with the antibacterial thing. And she has a point that the paper masks are not as effective as, let's say, what I'm wearing, which is the N-ninety-five, okay? So I think we can still follow the governor's order, but I do agree that those are approved in a hospital. From my recollection, and I'm not sure this is something we should really be arguing about because none of us are medical professionals. So if, I would not have a problem if that's approved by a hospital, just add it to the list. Because if it's antibacterial, that is what some of the health professionals are wearing, that's even what they're wearing in clean rooms.
Well, antibacterial is taking care of bacteria. We're talking about a virus, they're two different things.
Well, it's the, it's, I, I get what you're saying. And again, I'm not a medical professional, I just, I'm not sure that anyone in here are qualified to really do this. I just know I've seen those, even in Beckman Coulter's lab where they're dealing with the virus. So I personally, I'm, I think the most important thing here is we, we cover it in face shields. If somebody wants to do the research, that's fine. I'm just not sure this is something we want to argue about, to tell you the truth. I'm really happy people are wearing masks. And if the face shield has a, has, has the medical quality and, and if you'll provide that, then I have no problem making an amendment to this. If you guys want to wait to approve it, that's fine. I agree with Michael though, that no matter what, the governor's order stands. I, I just, you know, us trying to argue about what's a valid.
We're not saying not wear it. We're saying mask, a shield, we're all complying.
Except that there are parts in this policy, if we're going to comply, that say that the mask needs to be, or should be, should be covering your face, nose, and mouth, and yours does not. And then it also says.
The executive order.
It's to the top of my.
It's not, it's, Melissa, it's just, it's right at your eye level.
All the food service uses it.
I don't think the food service is using those masks in Prior Lake.
It's not in the definition in the governor's order.
I'm talking about Prior Lake's savage area schools. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to the restaurants, that's not my.
I thought you said a restaurant in, in Prior Lake.
No, I didn't say restaurant.
I apologize, I couldn't hear you.
And the other part is, it also says that you should, like Terry has a mask here, which I first, at first glance, thought that we couldn't use that based on this policy because I've read this policy quickly. Since it says should, it says that there should be a piece here that blocks off the air. That's what's in this policy. So I mean, we're going to make.
We're going to have people passing out.
I'm just telling you what's in the policy, Melissa.
It's also in the governor's order.
It's a guideline. We don't have to follow word for word.
What I'm saying is, that's what's in the policy.
It's a guideline for the local control that we're.
Melissa, this is what's in the policy. I'm not saying we're going to, whatever we're going to do with it, I'm just telling you what is in the policy, what it says.
It's the executive order.
If we're going to not do those things, then let's not put it in our policy. I'm not sure if we can change the policy.
So MSBA confirmed we have to comply. And here's the definition from the executive order. For the purposes of this executive order, the following terms are defined as follows. The face covering must be worn to cover the nose and mouth completely and can include a paper or disposable.
I read it this morning. I, we don't need another tutorial. I think we all read it.
I'm not trying to tutorial, I'm trying to say that we are required to comply with this.
We can add to this. It's something as simple.
And I'm telling you the definition of a face covering in the, I'm not trying to argue, I'm trying to say here's what, and we're telling our teachers we're going to keep them safe.
I suggest a motion is in order.
I'm, I'm trying to catch up on something here, just.
I would, I would just suggest somebody can make a motion to amend the resolution. We can vote on it. We can get a second, we can discuss it, we can vote on it, and then we can.
Jonathan, we, what I'm reading here is that, Michael's right, we don't need to approve this policy.
Okay.
We do need to comply with the governor's orders.
Yep.
So if we're not ready to approve this policy, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Out of law. But we still have to do what it says in his order when school starts.
Yep.
And it, and it, so in the emergency executive order, it was requiring that someone has to wear a face covering in certain settings. And it goes into detail exactly.
And it defines it. It does not include that, the shield right now.
I disagree. Anyone, pardon?
That's fine.
If anyone wants to make a motion that we table this, or not table, but we wait on approving a mask policy, but we are going to follow the guidance by the governor.
I'll make that motion, we're going to follow the governor's orders and we're going to table the definitions of the mask policy.
I don't think table is the right word, for sure, but I know what you mean.
Okay. And we're going to.
Further review.
Further review the policy.
Do I have a second?
Let me clarify the motion on the table.
Can you repeat your motion, Mary?
Yes, we're going to follow the governor's mandate and the executive order, but we're going to put the policy under further review, the actual wording of the policy.
You guys just said that we couldn't do it.
What?
You said that we, that we couldn't do what she's proposing.
No, we can.
It's the governor's order.
Stacy, just, we have to follow the.
She's proposing two different things.
Yeah. The, the, the guidance that came from MSBA said you don't need a policy. You have to comply to the governor's order. So I don't think we need any type of motion or anything. We have to comply to the governor's order.
But we have a policy before us.
And you have a policy before us. So, yeah, but I mean, it doesn't matter what we say in the motion. We still have to comply with the governor.
Enrique?
Yeah, just the overall guidance is we can be more restrictive. We just can't be less restrictive than Executive Order 20-81.
Right.
Does anyone else want a second, the motion?
Second.
But we're talking about revisiting the policy then, correct?
For further review.
Have a second?
We have a second. Any other discussion?
We're tabling for further review. Is that basically?
I don't think tables is the right word.
We're, what are we doing?
We're going to further review it and we're bringing it back.
Do we even need it?
You're suspending definitely.
That means you're coming back to it.
I think this does fit under the postponement.
Right.
We talked about it a couple of meetings ago because we are looking for additional information and clarification to be able to reach a decision. So I think it does kind of fit that heading under Robert's rules of a postponement or table in our, our language we want to use.
Table was the right word, but that's okay. I don't care if that's it.
And I, and I would agree.
Definitely.
And I would agree with Jonathan that in case this comes up with the students, okay, for whatever reason, that the detail that's in this policy is eventually going to be necessary. So if we just hold on to it and go get more information, I think we're all going to be better off.
And I would agree. I think we do need a mask policy because like our other policies that might be state statute, we've chosen to keep them because that's easier for parents and families to refer to our policy than go find a statute.
And because you've got language in here that will terminate a teacher.
In the mask policy?
Yes, it will terminate a teacher.
Yeah, I think it's at the end. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table that we are going to, this will be go through further review and that we will follow the state's.
I guess for further review, are we seeing that it comes back on the 24th? Does it open the meeting up?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Does everyone understand that?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. Okay, these are the second readings. These have come before us. This is the, this will be the third time. It's Policy 201, School Board Vacancies. As I said, this is the third time. It hasn't been any changes since the last time. Does anyone have any comments on the school board vacancies? We are not voting on this tonight for further discussion. Don't see anyone wanting to discuss. Policy 215, School Board Use of Electronic Mail. Same situation. Okay, those will come back. But this is July, in our September meeting, since we can't vote on them at the work session.